Alright guys, we're here. I'm gonna take a few seconds and let you guys roll in. Come on in, the water's fine. PokerCoaching.com, study session stream. It's a big, big day. We're super excited. I know I'm not looking at the screen right now. I am letting the world know. That we are here. And we are ready to rock. We are ready to get our learnouts. Ever been a couple minutes late? I was talking with Sixes and then we got all excited because we saw our quizzes are officially on the site. So that was super exciting. We had to bask in the glory. So yeah, pokercoaching.com. Here are the quizzes right now. You can see, you can see. Scrolling in. We know these guys right here. Quiz for me, quiz from Sixes. We are officially, official, yo. Welcome, 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 welcome. Cyrus live. Sorry we're late, sorry we're late. But these are the quizzes. For those of you joining us for the first time, Poker Coaching quizzes on PokerCoaching.com. X mission point PC in the chat. You can see it in the banner right underneath the chat in the overlay there as well. You can sign up. There's a premium version for about fifty bucks a month where you get five hundred quizzes and all sorts of homework and range charts and all this great stuff. But there's also a free version too, so you can use the link and sign up for free and you get, I think there's twenty quizzes to start and they update every so often. So you can get involved in those. The quizzes are really cool. They got a video attached to them and you get four choices and each choice has a point value assigned to it. And then you can see over here how we got all these points from all these quizzes we've been doing the last few Saturdays with you guys. And then the cool thing is, is when you get points, you can use those points to unlock other study content. So they've done a great job of making it a little interactive and kind of making it a game so that you win points, so that you can unlock more things to induce you to study more. So it's really good. It's really, 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 really good. We're gonna be doing this live, no delay with our partner Crazy Sixes. He's starting his stream and he's gonna call me any second. So we're just waiting for that call to come in and we're gonna take some more of these quizzes and see how we do. Each day, we have a competition, Sixes and I. If he beats me in points, or he beats us in points, so we're gonna take these together. Then we go over there and do a ten dollar ACR giveaway in his chat. And if we beat him, he comes over here in our chat and does a ten dollar giveaway as well. And last week we tied, which meant that we both did giveaways in each of our individual streams. So a chance for ten bucks on top of a chance to improve yourself. Chance to have a good time. We'll be doing this for a couple of hours and we usually get four, five quizzes in. And they're fun. We had a really interesting one last week where I was like, man, I'm not even playing this hand, but I'm gonna play it because it's in the quizzes and so I guess we gotta play this hand. And it was funny because it was a full three. And so yeah, so like they even try and trick you a little bit. So yeah, we'll give them a second here. Let people roll on in. The other cool thing they have besides the quizzes, we'll look, give a dashboard here. Tells you how many quizzes there are, how many homework assignments, how many days to the next webinar. We attended the Matt Affleck webinar this week, which was really good. He's doing an hand history review on ACR where he ran super deep. I think it was a eighty dollar forty K? Or forty dollar eighty K. But it was cool, cool to get into someone's, you know, mind of that caliber. So they have one once a week. Homework challenges. You can see they give you a hand scenario and then you do the homework in the forum and break down what you would do. Rewards. This is where you get your points. You can see, you know, we have two, uh, two reward stars or whatever, and you can buy all this other stuff. eBooks, private coaching, review pack, quiz pack, all for all these stars that you earn by doing the quizzes, which is really cool. Look, there's a ton of stuff in there. There's a store. There's a calendar that lets you know like all the different events, the next webinar being on the twentieth. And there's a community, so you can just discord. Oh, one thing too, and not to say it, they also have a backing program that they're starting, which is cool. And anyone can apply at any stakes. And you can work out a backing deal with PokerCoaching.com. So for those of you looking for stakes and stuff, that is a new program they're running out as well. They have tournaments. They have cash game quizzes and tournaments and cash game homeworks and turn and cash game curriculum. But we tend to stick to the tournaments because that's what we do. But for you cash game players, they have content for you out there as wow. And that's what's up. We're Sixes. Where you at, Sixes? Let's check it out in your stream. Oh, there he is. He's in there and he's chatting away. I see him. I see him, I see him. So yeah, I think we're gonna start off, probably fill all these blanks here with these quizzes and we'll work our way down. Kind of check them out. There's a, God, I don't even know how many. Six hundred and two quizzes on the site? Eeps, eeps. Eeps, eeps, eeps. Looks like this is gonna call in right now. He's sending me Skype messages. There he is. The man, the myth, the legend.
Haha, what's up my man? How you doing buddy?
Good man, good man. How you doing?
Good, good. Can you guys hear me okay? You hear me?
Uh, looks good according to OBS.
Same here. You're good to go, man.
Cool, cool.
Alright.
I've already said it like three times today, but I'm excited. So like, look at these sexy motherfuckers right here.
That's so nasty to be on a site with these other crushers, you know, well-known poker public figures is pretty exciting. I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I didn't mention that when I was kind of giving a little intro here too, you know, Assassinato, Matt Affleck, John Little, all coaches on the site, so very highly respectable. Quality poker content.
Yep, Evan Jarvis as well, you know, member Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, John Little. And I believe they have all the material of the six hundred quizzes. It's just those guys, so to even be a part of this is amazing. I don't, I don't take it for granted, you know?
Nice. Outkick says Assassinato is his lord and savior. He's on that crazy exploit trip. He's, he's in the same train as you. I would say you are more Assassinato, I am more Johnson Little.
I'll take it. Fine. I mean, they're both crushers.
Yeah, there's no, that's not.
Yeah, that's not, yeah, they both have won a lot of money in life. So excited, man. Hey, what's up? Jaybird's in the chat and Greater, what's up guys?
Cool.
Alright, so what are you thinking?
I'm thinking five seventy-six is one we didn't do, five seventy-one is what we didn't do, and then we can kind of move down the list and figure out some blanks.
Okay, yeah, cool. And what I think before we start, you know, letting everyone know, watching, you know, a little quick overview of the site, you know, you go here to the dashboard. We do it all the time. It's just so much amazing content here with all the homework assignments. Matt Affleck just had a very good webinar where he reviewed an eighty-eight dollar that he played online. I believe it was an eighty-eight dollar on ACR. He reviewed that hand history and, you know, went through a lot of stuff. So there's just all kinds of opportunities to get better here. Infinite number of quizzes. It'll take you forever to do homework, webinars, charts. So this is just an amazing resource.
Yeah, it's interactive and it's fun. I was saying like the Tinto guys all kind of signed up for the, for the free version and then they're having like weekly competitions. Who can score the most points? You know, and they're trying to convince me to do giveaways for, for Tinto for that. So yeah, I mean, it just goes to show you it's fun, it's interactive and, and yeah, it's a good time.
Yeah, I mean, the scoring system is cool. Instead of just taking, you know, you can track how you've done, you can go back and take it again. Well, there's no point in taking it again because you know the right answer, but you know, you can track how, how you're doing, which I really like as well, so.
And you unlock more content by doing these quizzes. You unlock more study content that you can buy with the points that you earn, which is gives you, it's incentive, it's incentivized, it incentivizes you to go out there and take the quizzes and, and get better. It's good.
Yep. And last thing is, remember guys, you can sign up for free. I mean, you can do, you get twenty free quizzes. Sign up for free. Take my quiz and send me your score.
There you go. X mission point PC in my chat or Sixes chat to get links to checkout pokercoaching.com. So whichever stream you're in, go ahead and use it, abuse it. It's there for you.
Yep, yep.
Alright, brother, you wanna kick one of these off?
Yes, sir. So what are we looking at?
Five seventy-six?
With five seventy-six or five sixty-seven? Is that what you meant?
Um, I have five seventy-six as a blank.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I see that with Matt Affleck's, with the ten ten hand. Cool, yeah, let's do it.
Alright, cool. I'm gonna kick it off now.
Same here. Alright, so you're gonna mute right now?
Uh, nope.
Alright.
Yeah, I'll mute you.
Alright, yeah, let's do that. I'm gonna mute him as well. We'll play it. Alright.
Hello everyone. Today we have a hand from a four hundred dollar live tournament that I recently played at the Venetian. In this hand, we have pocket tens in the big blind at one hundred, two hundred with a two hundred big blind ante. We have twenty thousand effective stacks, a hundred big blinds. Fold so lowjack, who is an unknown player to us, not a regular in these tournaments at all. Uh, this lowjack raises the four hundred. Fold to us in the big blind. Should we fold, call, re-raise to sixteen hundred or re-raise to two thousand?
Any spot guys, pocket tens, put your, hey, what's up nudist? Get your answers out there. Are you calling? Are you raising sixteen hundred? Putting a little more heat on it because we're out of position. Let me see some answers out there in the chat. What are you doing with pocket tens? I'm ready, man, if you are back. I'll keep popping it to two K, putting some heat. I see a two K out there. Jaybird flating. Usually call, but I'm on my raise sixteen hundred. What is that? Forex? Red out there, he's calling.
Alright, I got it.
Yeah, me too. Uh, we got a handful of, uh, we got a two K out there. We got a sixteen hundred out there. We got a couple of flats. This is gonna be interesting because I know that I'm always flating here and I feel like you raise here a decent amount of time. What do you think?
No, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a fine spot to flat, especially with an unknown opening from MP. I don't, hopefully my guys could hear Matt. That's why I had to play it back, but um, just back to the hand. Yeah, I mean, with an unknown in an event like this, I'm probably just gonna take a call line. Um, you know, we just get in spots where if we do come over the top to sixteen or two K and, you know, he four bets. Uh, we just are in a very tricky spot out of position where we really are just kind of turning tens into a bluff and we really don't want to play for stacks.
Yeah, I kind of feel the same way and I feel like this is one of those hands that like, there's always gonna be at least one over on the flop. And then we're gonna c bet the flop, we get called. Are we then turning tens into a bluff and barreling the turn? It kind of gets a little murky, especially a hundred bigs deep.
Yeah, I agree. So I mean, my answer here just feels like call. Um, it's unknown, you know, he's not, he doesn't have a read that this guy is loose passive or anything like that. I mean, there are situations and circumstances where I think we can three bet. There's no reason we to think this guy's raising to steal the three hundred chips in the pot either. Um, so yeah, I think it's gonna be a good spot to call. That's kind of my answer right now.
Yeah, I agree. Outkick says didn't want to give up, bet two K, don't want to give up the betting lead, except for in the big blind here, we don't have the betting lead at the moment, right? And we're gonna be out of position the whole hand. I guess there is some argument for raising to get the initiative and kind of buy position. But then again, like it comes down jack high and we're firing. Alright, right? We should be c betting a jack four, six board, for example, and then if it comes queen on the turn, are we turning that into a double barrel? Outkick. And then turning tens into bluff and then selling it on the river. It gets murky, gets murky. As my voice gets higher, the, the situation gets murkier. Alright, I got three calls and two raises, so we're gonna go call.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna go call. Anybody in my chat, what do you guys think? Anybody calling here? Uh, Matt's evaluation of the situation that this is a live tournament at the Venetian with an unknown, probably rec player and EP opening to four hundred. What are you guys doing? Anybody in my chat? Have an opinion of how they play these tens? You got two people raising and three calling. Call all day, agree, not wanting to play for stacks, out of position with tens. I agree, dude Reno. And Amy says call if it's just heads up, no need to raise here. One hundred percent agree. We're doing it.
I'm playing it, I'm back.
What?
What happened? Now I gotta jump in your chat. Shove all in. That's what he said. Alright, let's go with the call. Six points. He likes the raise.
I think this is a close spot between a three bet and a flat call. And I think it depends on your opponent. Given this player is an unknown, I'm always gonna kind of side with the more aggressive options. I think they'll make bigger mistakes. So I really like to re-raise here to sixteen hundred being the best option. Um, I think like a Forex raise out of position, a hundred big blinds deep. You can also re-raise to two thousand. I think both options are perfectly fine. Um, but I also think calling is a good option too. Um, I think I just prefer the re-raise because players just call too much to three bets. Um, and more importantly, they do not four bet enough. So if players are not four betting enough, then you get a three bet, a more linear range. And hands like pocket tens, you can three bet now and not have to worry about them four betting and you having to fold away your equity. Um, whereas against an aggressive four better, you might choose to just call. So. This time.
Alright, you did, oh, I'm sorry, you threw it?
Got ten seconds.
We'll give him, uh, we'll give toe a minute. I'm so, I'm kind of surprised, um, versus an unknown here to just blow up the pot, but these guys, he, he's assuming, uh, this guy's probably pretty passive. Uh, he's not gonna four bet without the stones. Uh, and he probably just folds to the four bet. Since people aren't four betting enough, they're gonna call to wide and light. He's gonna call with the worst pairs in hands we do very good against. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I can get behind it. You know I raise here sometimes, but I thought my interpretation of the situation of him not having much information and him being, you know, it looks like you're in, he's only in lowjack. Um, but yeah, I'm kind of surprised.
Yeah, I'm a little surprised too. Uh, but yes, it's one of those spots where we're so deep. He's like, yeah, we, we could definitely call here. We could definitely raise sixteen hundred. We could definitely raise two K. So yeah, just, just don't fold and you'll be alright.
Like there is no bad option here. Just don't fold, you know? You want to use the big bet size. Uh, you want the three bet, you want to call. All options are fine. Uh, practice, and I agree with him there. Because I do find raises here probably more than I call, but in this situation, I can see a call being okay.
Yeah, I actually call here way more often than not. Play in post, it's interesting. Um, okay, so it looks like he just called in the video though, right? Because look at the pot.
Yeah, he did just call.
Okay, so given the way he played it, I mean, it's always a check, right? It's never gonna just lead out to the rest.
Yeah, I don't see the reason to really lead out. It's gotta be a check here. Greater says check as well. Yeah, I think check has to be applied, but I've been wrong before, you know? Um, but yeah, I mean, anybody in your chat doing anything else, I would, I would think a majority of players here are gonna find it just to check.
Yeah, Red says, uh, what happens if we raise sixteen hundred, get four bet to six K? Um, yeah, that sucks. I mean, that was a big reason why Sixes and I kind of said we should flat a lot here or some of the time here. Um, and that's why Matt Affleck said that, uh, he likes it too. He said that people generally don't four bet enough and I would agree that not very many people have light four bets and even less have light four bets when they're not raising from like the cutoff of the button. It's way less light four bets. So I guess we get the full tens in that spot. Um, or I mean, do we? He's got some ace king and ace queen, but then again, it's murky again.
Well, yeah, here the thing is, I really like, just check, just checking. Uh, he's just going to be c betting damn near his entire range. We get a bet from, uh, all of his king, queen, queen, jack hands that, yeah, and I think we just check raise, right? I don't know. Um.
I am all about like betting for value. Uh, this is a four hundred dollar tournament too, so it should be a weaker field. So I am cool with the check rates for sure. Because he's still gonna have eights and nines. And sevens and.
But at the same time, when we check raise, they do, I like to just call with some over pairs, but we do get control of the pot, you know? Um, check calling seems interesting. Dude Reno says he likes check call. You calling off sacks after he jams you? No. When he check raises. A lot of bad turns for check calls. So yeah, we got some debate here in my chat on check raising and check calling, so.
I got a couple of checks and that's it. Anybody else?
Yeah, we're gonna see the, uh, turn or see the next action. So, yeah, I'm gonna check here.
Me too.
Alright, we're checking and let me mute toe real quick.
You don't, me, I mute you.
I really like checking here and I think weaker players tend to play their hand here rather than playing their range. And a hand like pocket tens here certainly wants to bet, but when we think about our range here, facing a middle position player who is raising probably somewhere around twenty percent of hands. The middle position player's range is certainly stronger than ours. And that really leads to us wanting to check our entire range, which I think is the best option here. The key point here is to pay attention to your entire range rather than your specific hand here, which is pocket tens. So checking, um, I think is the best option against very, uh, specific opponents that you want to exploit. I think betting eight hundred here can be a decent option. I don't like betting twelve hundred at all. I think it's just way too much. And betting four hundred really doesn't accomplish much as well because they're just gonna be able to call that bet so loud. So if you are gonna lead here as an exploit, I like betting about eight hundred, but in general, you just kind of want to check this your entire range, even though this is a better board for us than the lowjack. We do check and our opponent checks back. Turn is the deuce of diamonds. Should we check? Bet five hundred, bet eight hundred or bet twelve hundred?
Alright. Hmm, you done?
I'm done.
Okay, you finished, yeah.
Always bet.
Oh, I mean, yeah, we're certainly not checking. Uh, we can get value. So the thing is, we, I would expect this player probably to bet all of his pairs. I mean, I think he may have a very small frequency of betting, uh, checking like a set or something, but even those hands at a larger percentage are going to be betting because this board kind of hits us and get value from our range. Um, but yeah, I mean, I'm just betting eight hundred here.
I mean, you should show betting eight hundred, Cyrus betting five hundred, I'll kick betting eight hundred. I'm conflicted a little bit about the bet size.
Me too.
I think when he checks the flop, he has no over pairs really and very few sets. I think even sets kind of bet a little bit because shit gets weird when a five or seven or three come on the turn a little bit. Um. I just think when we bet eight hundred, I don't know what's calling because he checked the flop.
I agree. Maybe a smaller bet. Maybe invokes a call from more ace highs. Maybe we get more ace high calls when we use a smaller sizing. Uh, because when we condense by using a bigger size, we have all the tubes. He has just barely any. He might check back ace deuce, but that's like really the only deuce in his range. Uh, we have all the deuces, all the straights, all the very strong hands. So maybe we want to just go a small bet size and get value from ace high.
Yeah, and I feel like I'm gonna double barrel this a lot, so I can go smaller here and then bet bigger on river.
Just figuring when he does call, he has something that might call twice. I think this might be a small, small, this might just be small, small, given.
Ah, that might make sense too, given the, given the aggression.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just think when we go smaller on river as well, when we go small in turn, we're still keeping in some ace highs. But I guess it depends a lot on what the river card is, but at the same time, I just don't feel like he's got enough strong hands to call a big bet at any point in this hand versus our range where we're gonna have straights and deuces and boats and whatnot.
Uh, Machina Show says when we're playing from the blinds, checking the flop is pretty much to play with just about all of your range. I would say if you're facing a raise and you flat, then yes. But there are, if it's a lint pop, for example, there are some, you know, flops that are good to lead out on. A flop like this would actually be pretty decent to just kind of donk lead out on because it hits you so much. Uh, Jaybird says we have lots of bluffs here. He likes twelve hundred or maybe even eight hundred. I just think like we have lots of bluffs here, but what's gonna, like ace high is gonna call the twelve hundred? Justin? I feel like ace high could find a fold.
Hmm, yeah, it's, I mean, it's hard to say. I mean, maybe ace, king and some, I just.
But not twelve hundred. I think twelve hundred ace high finds a fold.
Oh, I, I, I mean, I agree. I don't know why we would polarize our range here. Maybe we just want to get one street from like some of his best ace highs. Just one street, I guess. That could be, you can make a case for that, but I don't think they ever call two big streets. And the question could even be like, are we getting two streets of value here ever from ace high? Would that lead us to just use a bigger bet for one street, hopefully getting called? So.
Now I'm conflicted again between five hundred and eight hundred.
I know, like, do we get, this is, I mean, we have a two street hand, but can we get two streets of value from his range?
I have four eight hundreds and three five, and three five hundreds, two five hundreds.
I got one, somebody's saying that on the bigger side than a five hundred. I'm kind of leaning towards five hundred.
Nudist wants to split the difference and go six hundred.
I know, right?
Uh, yeah, so I'm sorry. What did you say? Which way are you going?
I'm going five hundred. I, I still feel like, uh, relative to his range. I bet Matt's gonna go bigger here. Like, I, my initial, like when we first seen the hand, I wanted to stay eight, eight hundred, but upon fit, like analyzing like the range and what we want to happen here, which is to get value, I felt like I want to go five.
Yeah, I would go five, but since the crowd is going eight hundred, I'm gonna go with the toe army. But I would go five hundred personally.
Yeah, Riderback says eight hundred. And then Dude Reno says, I like five hundred, the best chance of getting a call. Don't want to miss value. And that's kind of where I'm at as well, Dude Reno. I'm gonna go five. What are you doing?
Now conflicted again. I'm gonna go with the army, damn it. The army says eight hundred. We're going, we're going with the masses. This is for us as a group. We're going, we're going down together. We're gonna rise to glory together.
Let's do it. Alright, mute.
Once our opponent's checked back this flop, I think we have a very easy bet here. I don't think check is an option with our hand of pocket tens. We want some protection from over cards. We want to get value from worse hands such as ace high. Um, this is a really good board and a really good turn for our range. We have all the suited deuces. Our opponent doesn't have any suited deuces other than, I guess, two combos of ace deuce suited. Um, so in general, this is just a great spot for us and we'll be betting here quite wide. And so I really like betting five hundred. I think that's the betting five hundred and betting eight hundred. I think betting eight hundred's a really good option. I think that's the best option. Betting five hundred is a very good option. Um, betting twelve hundred, I think it's just too large. We want to bet hands like seven, six and king four um, for protection and for value. And we're gonna have a lot of draws and bluffs here. So we're gonna be betting a lot here, so I like to err on the smaller side when we bet. So betting eight hundred's the best, betting five hundred's, uh, next best, I think. We've got five hundred here. And our opponent raises to twelve hundred. Should we fold, call, re-raise to three thousand or re-raise to fifty-four hundred?
Alright. I'm sorry to, for me, my volume's still a little quiet. I'm sorry, guys. I'll work on that.
You can go to the volume mixer in the bottom corner, remember?
Yeah, I got my, I got Google Chrome all the way up. Uh, I don't know why I'm still having issues with this. Hmm.
It was better last week, right?
Yeah, it said it was better last week. Could you guys hear it in my chat? Was, is it still super low or can you hear him at all? I don't want to interrupt.
No worries. What does it make a point to check it before we start next time? Bob, good to see you, good to see you.
Wait a minute, we gotta.
It's got a booyah in there for the ten points from Machina's Joe.
What up, Panka? Thank you for the follow. And then Sevzer with the fourteen months. Thank you, man. You're a legend. Thank you, buddy. Really appreciate you.
Fourteen months?
They can hear it. It's just not great. Alright, well, I'll, I'll be more quieter. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll get through it. But, um, it sounded like if I could just rehash what Matt said there, he really liked between five and eight hundred. He thought eight hundred would be the best. Um, we have a much stronger range with a lot more made hands than he does here. Um, but he just thought we wanted to go bigger. We could still get called by enough of his range with the eight hundred sizing. But between both, I think it's fine. Yeah, it looks like we're just stabbing a little bit more. Um, and it looks a little bluff here, so I agree. Um, here, we're saying call. Tater says he's re-raising. Uh, interesting stuff.
Yeah, guys, get it on the chat. I see one call. What else are you doing? I see Cyrus is calling all capital letters. Um, what are you doing, Sixes? I know what I'm doing.
Calling.
I'm calling too. Uh, the problem with the raise here is like, God, we're getting value from sevens, eights and nines. And then if we go, God, again, like we go three thousand, fifty-four hundred and he pops it, he.
It feels like an, it feels like a weird spot to turn our hand. I mean, we're not, oh shit. Not turn our hand into a bluff. Uh, it feels like a weird spot to open up the action. With the hand, yeah, we have a very strong hand, but at the same time, I mean, yes, villain can have ace deuce. He can have some uh, very trickly played over pairs. Plus, uh, the important part is we allow him to keep betting with worse value hands and we just bluff catch this hand, in my opinion.
Hundred percent agree. Calling here to let him bluff river and calling again.
Yep, Tater says ace three, ace four and ace five. Yep, Tater says ace three, ace four and ace five. Five hundred, Greater says five hundred induces some bait. Some, uh, more than, induces a little bit more than eight hundred. Another reason why it was superior. Yeah, I'm gonna call as well here. Um, yeah, let's just call. Yeah, let's call.
Call.
Alright.
I think there's really only one option here. I think calling is the only option. We're facing a small raise. We're calling seven hundred to win. A pot right now of twenty-eight hundreds. We are getting great pot odds, so folding is certainly not an option. Re-raising both options, um, just doesn't make a lot of sense. If we re-raise here, I think we isolate ourselves only against better hands. And strong diamond draws. Um, as for our opponent's range here, when they re-raise to twelve hundred. He could have those two combos of ace deuce suited. He could have a slow play, pocket sixes or pocket fours. And I think it's reasonable that he could have checked back a hand like aces or kings, um, as a slow play here. Um, so our opponent's range is quite ready. He can have a lot of diamond draws. Um, pocket sevens, eights and nines, et cetera. So we just have to call here and see what develops on the turn. We do call. The river is a seven. Should we check? Bet, bet eight hundred, bet sixteen hundred, or bet three thousand?
What do you think, guys? Get them out there. Are we checking or are we leading out? I know what I'm doing. Outkick says bet how much, Outkick?
Alright, hopefully that was a little bit better. Oh, but I muted myself. Hopefully that was a little bit better. Um. So we, I think we just bluff catch here. Uh, he was pretty much saying, you know, he can't have some slow plays. He can't have some strong hands. In his range here. Um, in my op- in my opinion, we just bluff catch here. When we open up the action and he raises, we really hate ourselves. You know, we're not happy.
Yeah, a, a, a lot of people in my chat says lead out. The problem is like we bet, we got three bet, and then we just randomly lead out is like the most awkward, weird. Line ever. And I'm trying to figure out what we get called by when we lead out. Uh, all the guys in my chat who said lead. What are we targeting to get called by? Just eights and nines. Everything else beats us, right?
Yeah, I mean, eights, nines, they would play their hand like this for value. If we're, if we're trying to compri- uh, compose a range that is. Has worse value than ours right now. It's like eights, nines. I really don't know of ace six, you know, ace four. Are ever really calling. So I think, you know, um. Yeah, I mean, I just think it's a simple check call and we lose less, you know, uh, if he does have the top of his range. And we get value from his bluffs, cause he's probably gonna continue betting like ace five of diamonds, ace three of diamonds or something like that. May turn their hands into bluffs. Um, here, so yeah, check call this side. I got a. Dude Reno says, I let him keep bluffing. If he has this, we lose less with a check call. Check call. Then someone says sixteen hundred.
Yeah, a bunch of sixteen hundreds and then I converted some people with my rhetoric. One guy says, change my mind, check. Uh, Jay Bird says he's checking lane bustler. I think so too. Nudist, uh, playing both sides says checker eight hundred.
What's up, nudist? How you doing, nudist? Yeah, I mean, for me, it's pretty, yeah, it's, uh, it doesn't feel like the right spot for a lead either. I agree, Vargro. Um, so I'm going with check here.
I'm going with check too. Looks like it's pretty tied.
Yeah, let's see what Matt has to say about this spot.
I think checking here is clearly the best option. Our opponent has represented a lot of strength here. And while I don't think our opponent is quite polarized, he could have been raising some kind of merged ace six or pocket sevens or eights. There's just not a lot of worse hands and he's kind of in a, we only really beat bluffs mode. So we wanna just always check to our opponent when they're polarized, even though he's not really polarized. It's kind of a similar situation here, so checking. Uh, against very weak opponents that you wanna try to exploit here, I could see betting eight hundred as a kind of blocking value bet. Uh, and possibly betting sixteen hundred, although I think that is way too large of a size and I think betting three thousand should never be used. We do check. And our opponent bets twenty-five hundred. Should we fold, call, re-raise to seven thousand? Or go all in?
Alright, guys, get that answers out there. Are we just calling?
Alright, um, I think we should ter- to do this an interesting way. Let's see what our chat has to say before we give input. Like, what do you guys do here in chat? I wanna see what, you know, how a lot of people play the spot before. I spout up my opinion on what I'm gonna do. It gives them a little, a little bit way, so.
Yeah, I got, uh, three, four calls. One, all you can eat, baby. Just kidding, calling.
Yeah, everybody says call. Um, Sevzer's calling. Uh, Tater's snap calling. No value in raising. Yeah, I completely agree. This just has to be a call. Yeah, we all, let's run it. It's a call.
I think it's safe to say that we are likely bluff catching here. There's a very small percentage chance he could play pocket eights or nines like this. But I really think he's just raising the flop, uh, or betting the flop in position with those hands for protection. So I think it becomes a close decision between calling and folding. Um, we will have some deuces. We can have some straights. Um, maybe even a, a six or a four. Or better hands to call with because they block slow play pocket sixes or pocket fours. Um, same goes with a seven maybe being a better call because we block pocket sevens then. Um, especially hands like seven, six and six, four are gonna be better calls, uh, blocking his slow play value hands. So I certainly wouldn't blame a call here and I think calling is still the best option here with no information. But I also think folding is a really good option as well here. Um, most players, especially given the larger sizing here. I just think they are under bluffing and I think you're gonna see a lot of, uh, slow play overpairs, et cetera. So it's, it, this is a really, really tough spot and I think everyone, including myself, um, in the moment. Will just instantly call. And I still think that's the best way, but I think folding should really be considered here as an option. We do call and the opponent showed pocket kings to win this hand. So my inclination after the fact that they're probably not bluffing enough, I think is correct.
Really interesting, um. Yeah, really interesting how he considered the fold so heavily, cause people just under bluff in these four hundred dollar tournaments. It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, what are his bluffs? You know, like, if we really think about it, like, uh, sure, ace high, like, ace high has some showdown value if he had ace five. And when he raises the turn with maybe some backdoor diamond draw or something like that, and he actually gets called. And on this kind of board, like, what, what hands do you have that you're folding? If he's got the blocked draws, is he, are you calling, are you raised calling a four on a turn? I guess for that price, I guess it's reasonable. When you go five hundred and he goes twelve, we're getting.
I kinda think our ranges are a little similar, where we have the sevens, the eights, the nines, you know, just like we kinda figured he had a lot of sevens, eights and nines. He did check out Cyrus. He was getting value. Uh, I think in a lot of ways, we've lost the minimum here.
Yeah, I mean, it feels like a pot where all, I mean, all of us are gonna lose a lot. I mean, but we, like you said, we can consider folding because. His true value range, when he checks back the flop, he never had eights, nines, really anymore, sevens, eights, nines. So he has some slow plays. Uh, and I think his slow play range of value hands is gonna be greater than that of backdoor bluffs. Cause he might turn some king, queen, the diamonds, some hands like that. You know, they have no showdown, some king, jacks and jack, nine of diamonds and some hands like that, I guess. But overall, he's probably gonna have more houses and overpairs, huh?
Yeah.
That's interesting to me.
Interesting, really interesting how heavy you consider the fold. That's a tough fold. What was your score?
Uh, my score, I think you got me. I got fifty-three.
Fifty-six.
Motherfucker.
One for the army.
And Dude Reno says, call big sizing screams bluff. To me, I think his range consists of more bluffs than hands we beat. Nah, I mean, if we really think about the range of hands, like, other than backdoor diamond draws, he really doesn't have any bare ace highs, king highs. So he's got backdoor draws and slow plays. Like, that, that's kind of where we split his range.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
What's up, John Paul the Great? Is this a live? Yeah, this was a live tournament at the beneath a four hundred dollar that he played. But yeah, he ended up calling. Ah, Sean, what's up, man? Bust it to WSOP main, two levels before. Damn, good luck, man.
Cool, that was a good one.
That was a good one.
So I have OCD and I see quiz five seventy-one is the only blank in the middle of all these quizzes I took.
Alright, let me go back to my quizzes and see what we got.
Do five seventy-one?
Yep, and for anybody getting here late, check this out, baby. Here, me and Toar on the site. Um, there's only been a handful of coaches, you know, Affleck, Assassin Auto, Jonathan Little and Evan Jarvis on the site. Here we go, baby. So, super excited about this. Remember, sign up free. You can take me and God Big, God's Big Toes. Quizzes and we'll, we're gonna have more coming on the site. We're gonna have a lot of quizzes on the site, so, uh, be sure to check those out, guys.
Yeah, Six and I put a bunch of quizzes in the can, as they say in the business, and they're gonna release them all the time, so. Now you get a little, little bits, little tastes. X match point PC in my chat or Six's chat to get a link to go check this out.
Yep. Alright. Five seventy-one is giving you OCD that it's just a blank in between for you.
Is it for blank in between for you?
Nah, I mean, I didn't do five seventy or, I think I did these on my phone and.
Oh, there was a bunch of these that we did the weekend that I went solo.
Oh, yeah, you did a couple when you did, yeah, cause I had to go to a wedding, that's.
I could skip my OCD and we could skip down if you want, and I can just do that off stream, cause it's gonna drive me crazy.
No, we can do it here. It's, I mean, it's all good, man. So, what's up, D Pokes and Bennett? How you guys doing? Good morning.
Alright, cool.
Uh, so five seventy-one it is.
Let's run it.
Alright, cool.
Alright, uh, this hand, we have ace nine of diamonds. Notice we only have twenty big blinds, sixteen thousand. Tight player is gonna lose to sixteen hundred. Lady regular from before is going to call. And we are on the button. Should we fold, call, raise to five thousand or go all in?
What are you guys doing out there? Get your.
Our only context here is, it's a tight player opening from the low jack. And then a loose aggressive player calling in the hijack. We have ace nine here suited, twenty big blinds. Ray raise to five thousand is not an option for me. Oh, well, we should let the chat say, I'm sorry. Let the chat say, what do you guys do in this spot?
I gotta float, I gotta jam.
What are you guys doing?
I know what I'm doing.
Either fold or all in.
This is a hard one. He calls, squeezes all in, says, I kicked.
I'm sorry about the audio, Bennett. I'm still having issues with getting it higher for some reason, man.
The volume on the videos themselves seem a little low. I don't know if that's because we have so much shit running with the stream that it's. We have like battling audio outputs or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I've been trying to mute some stuff, but, um, oh, he said he had it turned down on his, on the side. Never mind, that was his issue. Um, so my chat right now, I have two flats, somebody either going all in or folding, so he doesn't really give us an answer. Luke Poker says he likes to fold. Greater says he likes to fold. Original razor is labeled tight.
Yeah, the one thing that worries me is that it's a tight player, um, but even a tight player is gonna have like a king, queen open here that we can. Potentially exploit and, um, hands we may be able to get to potentially fold like a. Well, that said, since we got a, uh, I got a bunch of all in, I got some calls. For me, I would squeeze the hell out of this. This is like the. Um, but like, yeah, so I would squeeze it for sure. The one thing is a tight player, which has me slightly worried. But like I said, there's gonna have some ace ten suiteds and stuff that we can get the fold if we jam here and some, you know, some king queens that we could just pick up the fifty-two hundred. And pick up a third of our stack.
Yeah, most of my chat is folding now. Holy smokes. I can, I'm not folding. I'm just, yeah. I'm either calling or going all in as well, and for some reason, if we're trying to get into the head of Matt here. The fact that he labeled this guy a tight player probably means he's going to have a stronger linear squeeze range. You know, he's gonna want stronger hands to squeeze, to shove here. I think he's probably, I'm flating. I'm just gonna flat this spot, I guess.
I got, I got a shitload of folds. I'm, um.
I did too. A lot of people said folds.
We got, we got nits in the army.
There's a lot of nits. I mean, fold's not even, fold's not an option. It's. For me, am I shoving or calling? Like, I'm, I'm comfortable playing the twenty big stack. Call, getting to play ace nine on the button imposition, you know, um, I think it has enough equity that we can just flat here. Um, this player can come along with worse. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm shoving or calling. I don't really know what I'm doing yet for one of the two.
Yeah, I agree, uh, I agree. And I like, I've already jammed this and went on to the next table and. I'm twelve Taylor now. This bitch is all in. It's already dead.
I've already busted this. I ran into ace king, started complaining and I'm, I'm in the next tournament, right?
Re-bye.
Re-bye. Yeah. Sean says, I think it works best as a squeeze bluff. Just calling is tough because if you call, you are happy with seeing an ace. Uh, we, when it, when an ace flops, um, when we do call, I mean, we just call one bat, you know? I mean, we don't just fold. We're not happy about it, but we most likely just call a C bet depending on sizing unless he bombs it and commits us, right?
I would kinda argue that if we hit an ace on twenty bigs, we're probably, we have to go with the twenty bigs.
We have to.
If we had fifty bigs, then yeah, we might be able to get that off by the turn of the river, but.
But let's think about this, like, does he ever du- double barrels a bluff with no fold equity on an ace high board? When we obviously are committed to the pot, he's gonna have the strongest ace. Like, is he really gonna think he has bluff equity versus us? Or he just have enough bad aces that we just need to go with it? So these are questions.
Yeah, but I also think there's a caveat here. We have to consider too, like, the lad guy. We don't know if the lad guy is gonna be in this pot or not if we call and. I accept, so we don't know what the lad guy is gonna do in this pot if we call. He may throw a wrench in all the plans, push the tight player out, and now we gotta face the lad guy. We have some mystery as his hand unfolds, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Right, right. Um, well, I mean, I'm gonna go shove. I mean, I, I, I know, I mean, it feels like for this, actually, guys. Between the two options, all in or call, what do you guys, what is my chat doing? All in or call?
All in or call, guys.
Nobody, I don't think anybody, nobody said re-raise to five thousand.
No.
Yeah, all in, call, call. All in, always. Call, all in, all in, flat. Ooh, I'm split, dude. We got calls.
Call, call. We'll skip the folds. I'm three to two, call.
But at the, uh, does the chart say jam a knit? Like.
I think the knit still has opens from the low jack.
Dude, especially with this stack, you can afford to just open king, jack off, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, go for the glorian jam, he says, yeah.
Oh, I got some all ins coming in. I, I think we converted them. I'm almost, I'm pretty much tied between all in and call.
Yes, it's same here. Alright, I'm jamming.
Me too.
Alright, let's, let's move on.
This is a really close spot, um, with ace nine of diamonds. Um, I gave calling ten and all in an eight. Those are the two main options. Folding is a score of zero and five thousand. I gave a score of three. The main reason I prefer calling is for a couple of reasons. One, we're on the button, so we have position. And then second, if we shove. I don't know if we get any better hands to fold. We might get ace ten off the fold, but we also get hands like ace five suited. Ace four suited, worse suited aces, like ace eight, ace seven, ace six suited are all gonna fold through a shove. Ten nine suited, nine eight suited, jack nine suited, queen nine suited. These are all hands that we don't want to fold, seven, six of diamonds, six, five of diamonds. So we wanna keep those hands in the pot. And since we're on the imposition, um, I like a call. If we're on the small blind, I would shove for sure. We call ace, king, five, two spades. The lady regular is gonna bet two thousand. Should we fold, call, raise five thousand or go all?
What do you guys think? Got that? Get your answers in the chat.
Well, my original thought about just flattening this button.
Yeah, but it's super close, right? It's eight versus ten points, like, they're pretty.
Oh, you're not making a mistake by jamming this spot is pretty much what he's saying. But I like the point he made of. We're just gonna make worse hands fold and not too many better. We're just gonna make worse hands fold and not too many better hands, you know, uh, fold. Like ace jacks never folding, ace ten is calling, uh, probably folding in this case. Um, and then a lot of hands we do well against and we keep in worse, so.
Yeah, I thought the other interesting thing, he mentioned that if he was in the small blind, he'd be jamming for sure cuz he's out of position. Uh, but because he's got the button, calling is more sexy.
Yep, that's a very good point Bennett. Um, you were right, man. The thing is, what are you hoping to get called by when you jam that you're ahead of? I don't think it's more of that we're planning to be ahead. We're folding, we're just trying to use our fold equity. Uh, we have a handed block, some strong hands.
Yeah, and I would imagine even a tight player is gonna raise all pocket pairs from this position, right? And so we can jam and get twos through sixes, maybe sevens to fold, um, from a tight player, right? And so we still get better to fold that way. Um, we can get ace ten to fold, ace jack probably not folding.
And then obviously the hands we do find against the king jacks, queen jacks and things like that, but yeah, um. I like it. I I like it. I like his approach here. And when the player that the initial razor checks. And then the player behind bets a third pot, do we want to? Raise here to clean up our equity on the turn? I mean, right now it just shut the shit down because there's a lot of interesting bad turn cards. He'd likely three bets his better aces in this spot. Um, so that's gonna leave him with spade draws, some king queens. King jack, king ten type hand. So we're gonna have some interesting turns. We don't have any backdoor equity really either. So this is interesting.
I know what I'm doing here. I got a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of calls in my chat. Call, 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 call. One hit your ace, might as well jam, which I have a comment to, but I kinda wanna wait and see what the, what the crowd's gonna say.
Yeah, right now, uh, dude Reno says, I think this short we jam to deny equity and take it down. And then Luke poker says, the one issue with this particular spot is that it may be hard to reevaluate live. The two blinds have perfect rejam stacks. Very good point. Um, so while we flat here, we can get rejammed by them. A lot and that's something definitely can take into consideration, so.
And if we get rejammed or recalling?
Oh, if we, uh.
If the blinds jam and everyone folds to us, are you calling? I think I C Mizer says that's the call.
Ooh, this would be a good one to put in. I C Mizer just ran, run a random spot where. We flattened then these two fold and we have a decision to call this jam. That would be very interesting to see what range of hands we would need. It feels like this would be right on the borderline, but.
Yeah, last time I ran this hand, I feel like it was a call, but uh, some response, but uh, we could definitely run it. That'll take a little bit of time, though. What did you get? What, what are you doing here?
Oh, man, I mean, uh, if we call, it gives this guy an opportunity to call with some of his king X as well. Uh, probably calling, uh, god.
Yo, curse and cough.
Well, I mean, jamming here, while I think that he's just got, he just has worse hands, so it's almost we get. Better to call and worse to fold.
I agree a hundred percent. That was kinda what I was waiting to say. Uh, Jay said he is jamming and then hitting the bar. I say that when you jam here. Jay, what are you, are you're jamming for value, I imagine, right? You're not jamming as a bluff with top pair. So if you're jamming for value, what's worse than ace nine that's gonna call you?
Yeah, we get worse, we get better to call and worse to fold.
Yeah, and I think when we jam, we can even get the flush draws potentially fold.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna go with the call, um, in this spot. Uh, Bennett says he likes to call.
I'm calling too.
Yep, at this point, you aren't folding. Calling lets other hands realize equity. It allows him to keep blocking as well.
Yeah, too, cuz we look like we have a lot of kings in our hand when we flat here and he might double barrel the flush draw.
Do we wanna flatten, let him realize shitty equity or fold that equity out and take it down? Well, we don't know if we fold out, right? We, I mean, we just get the worst hands to fold. I mean, it's, it's a worse hand. We don't know what part of his range he's at.
We might be value telling ourselves.
Yeah, dude Reno says, I guess it's a matter of which line is more profitable long term. Him betting with worse hands and us playing the hand in position or us jamming and letting him fold all those worse hands. And then sometimes getting called by better that just ace ten, ace jack and overcalled and stuff like that.
Jay says, uh, putting a range out there, nines to jacks. The problem with that, Jabs, when we jam here and nines to jacks are just folding, we don't get any more value from them. And I don't know that they're gonna double barrel either, so I just think we're just never getting any more value from that. And if they have one of those hands. They have very few outs to, to catch up. You know, I'm not gonna fear the reaper.
Right.
Don't call. Most of my guys said no.
Tight checks. Most of my guys are, man, this has just become a discussion. I like it.
Debate, I'm helping your chat.
Yeah, it's a lot, yeah. People are making a lot of very good points. Uh, lag reg may call off ace even worse. So some people thinking he might call off some worse aces here when we jam because we have flush draws apparently. Um, some people just wanted, I like one, we got one call and then a couple people are coming over the top. We can't see the options. Oh, I'm sorry. Here, here's our options, guys. Yeah, the layout is kinda weird, um, here for me. There we go. I can make this smaller, but yeah, this is, uh, these are options. Call, fold, raise to five thousand or go all in. So I don't think we're ever raising to five thousand, in my opinion. So I'm gonna go ahead and just call.
Alright, let's play. Uh, Jaybird says a multi-way. I think you don't mind calling that way. If the low jack jams, hijack calls, we just fold. Agreed.
Yeah, so if he has, that's another consideration. He may check back top set or top two. Or something very, very strong, a set of fives or something like that. So if we jam, he has a snap call. And if we call here and he check raises, we can find folds in some cases, right, guys? So that's another, uh, factor we need to take into consideration that this player may sometimes have the top of his range, which are traps. And by just jamming, we get him to just snap, right?
Yeah, and I don't know about you, but I have Jaybird in my head all the time when I play. Jaybird's in the study group with me and sixes that we, when we study a couple times a week. And like, I think to myself, like, if I'm raising the ace nine, what ace X hands am I not raising here and? Am I just jamming ace deuce here at this point? Like, I don't know, like, we have to have some balance and some protection. Protection from, from, cuz we have top pair shit kicker.
Greater said, alright, yeah, let's hit it, but Greater says, extra cards don't benefit us. Ask played it to call. Alright, here we go.
Similar situation, um, that's pretty cool. I think if we raise. All worse hands fold and better hands call. Um, we get called by some worse aces still, but. I wanna keep in his queen jacks, jack tens, which he definitely plays this way, his seven, six of spades, eight, nine of spades. We just have like a lock on the same. We don't really need any protection. Like a spade is the only bad card in the deck. And like queen jack or ten, maybe if he makes Broadway. So I like to call and make my lady range look weak and try to induce another bluff. Here is a seven of diamonds and he bets fifty-five hundred. Should we fold, call or go all in?
Yeah, so Mad Dog, it's not about calling with twenty blinds and hitting it for tight player and not going with it. It's about how to extract the most value. And don't forget, we have the lag player in the pot too, so it's about.
Alright. Did you guys hear that? Okay?
Uh, I'm talking to the.
Oh, do your thing.
To the guys. Uh, so yeah, man, it's not about like not going with it and getting bet off your ace. Once you hit it, you're pretty much going with it on this stack size, Jay. The thing is, is that how do we extract the most value when we jam? Again, all better aces are the ones that are calling and everything else is just folding. We're not getting any value by jamming. Go ahead, man.
Yeah, and he was kind of an echo chamber for us there, saying, you know, we just get better hands to call and worse to fold.
Yep.
Like, he's going to have some gut shots in his range. He's going to have spade draws. He's going to have king X. And we kinda, I mean, we kind of identify kind of what cards are going to be bad for us on future streets. And we, we, we're aware how to proceed on those cards if he continues to bet, so, um, having a position here, yeah, I think it's easy call. And now at this point, um.
Let's throw out to the crowd. What are you guys doing? I got a call. I got one call in the chat. I know what I'm doing, um, but I'm a little conflicted, to be honest.
Yeah, at this point, all in is best at this point. I got two all ins. Z Barago says all in with the SPR. Uh, Bennett, at this point, you're all in, jam.
Jaybird is on point. That guy's a goddamn computer genius, mastermind. I love us some Jaybird. Nudist conflicted, all in or call? JPG says lag player, he's jamming.
This, I mean, let's identify his range. We do these exercises so we get better at ranging our opponents. And trying to, you know, work through these hands mentally. So he double barrels, he flaps, he uses a sizing that. We don't think we have fold equity much, so we should expect to get called a lot. Um. If he, he did use a small sizing, so I guess there are some spade draws in his range. Did kinda wanna bet a small price here instead of just check folding. Um, but his size isn't that small relative to our stack. Yeah, I mean, I think we just have to go with this.
Yeah, sorry, uh, I was saying goodbye to someone in chat. Yeah, I agree. I think, uh, I mean, I'm not ever gonna flat here and leave ten bigs behind at this point. And I think when we call here and leave ten bigs behind, is he ever just gonna triple to try and? If we had the flush, we'd already been all in, I think. So this looks like a bunch of weak shit. And so I don't think he's gonna fire. I don't think he's gonna fire three when we flat here.
So let's think about this. If we call fifty-five hundred, the SPR is gonna be about point three going into the river or something like that. We're gonna have seventy-four. Or seven K or eight K or something like that. It's gonna be like twenty-one out there, twenty-two K out there. So yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty simple. It has to be a jam or a fold. And at this point, um. With the lack of ace, king, ace, queen in this player's range, um, of course, he can have a set of fives. He can have ace five. But I think the range of ace eight, ace four do suited, the worst suited aces that he can have. Just kind of outweigh as well as the time he has flush draws that I think there's enough, uh, in his range that we beat. Um, compared to the hands that actually beat us when he doesn't, if we take out ace, king, ace, queen, you know?
Yeah, we're just committed at this point.
If we aren't.
I just don't think he's ever gonna triple for me, so I'm gonna jam.
Yeah, that's a very good point. If we aren't getting it in on a brick turn, why are we even calling the flop? This, this card doesn't change anything, um, and if we do call, we're gonna leave ourselves. There's still those same rivers that are bad for us, right? At least we have an ounce of fold equity here and we could just get it in with the best hand. I think going with it is, is gonna be the best, but, um. Yeah, this should be interesting. I'm all in. What are you, what are you thinking?
Um, most of my people are all in. I'm all in for sure.
So we're all in. Yeah, let's do it, guys. So, alright, I'm gonna run this video. Let's see.
Yep, we got exactly what we wanted. We induced another bet. Um, we only have twelve point four backs, so the only option is to go all in. I would never call. I'd be shoving here with my spade draws as well, so just get the money in. He's pot committed. And if he has some naked bluffs like jack ten, we get some folds. We go and shove. And he tanked forever, called it off with king queen. And that's a hand that might have folded on the flop. Uh, maybe he still might have called, but, uh, I really like how we played it. I don't like his turn bet. But we induced him to make a pretty big mistake on the turn by just calling on the flop and making our range look pretty weak.
Yeah, so there you go, uh, Jay, there you go. Like, it wasn't about.
Nailed it. What the hell kind of play is that from king, queen?
What the hell? Uh, yeah, so Mad Dog, it was about, uh, you were asking like, if you hit the ace, I'm just going with it. It wasn't about that. See, look how much extra value. We found a double up here that we may not have gotten had we just jammed on the flop. So we extracted, you know, extracted value from the king, queen.
Yeah, if we just jammed a flop, king, queens going bye-bye. And if this guy ever has a slow play in his range. Um, or, yeah, if he ever has slow plays, we're just dead, you know, um. But, you know, he can just call off with worse hands here. He can call with the worst king. He can check call a king. He can check call a flush draw. And we can get more value that way. So, yeah, I think that was good.
Jaybird says, this is what the live birds look like, guys. Gotta leave the computer sometimes. I say, this is what the fifty dollar online tournaments look like. Mass multi-table them.
Yeah, mass, I know, I wish I could play more live, live tournaments, multi-live tournament, it'd be sweet. Alright, so we probably got time for like one more, you thinking?
Uh, one or two. Yeah, I, I got all day. I got shit to do. It's Saturday.
I know, I just got shit around the house to do, but, uh.
Uh, yeah, let's throw another one in. Let's go back to quizzes. Uh, we filled a little gap. I don't know why mine keeps logging me out in between quizzes.
Now, take your time. Call pre-jam flop. He folds some king X and percentage of the time. Yeah, we don't wanna jam there. For twenty bigs when they have five five. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. Alright, so what number are you looking at, buddy?
Uh, looks like five fifty-two is the next blank I got.
Alright, wait a minute, my shit's lagging. Five fifty-two?
Yep. Uh, we can do a different one if you wanna move away from Matt and just try a different coach.
Like, yeah, let's do a different coach.
Let's do five forty-nine cuz that's Assassin Auto and he's gonna melt our brains.
It's always, it's always something interesting and then, yeah, this should be good. Alright, guys, we're gonna do this Assassin.
Five forty-nine.
What's up, Michael? Good morning, buddy. Good to see you. How you doing, Sam?
Ma, good morning. What up, buddy?
Dee, Dee's peanuts. What's up, man?
On Facebook. Alright, guys, uh, plan the video.
Let's run it. Yep.
In this hand, you're in a ten dollar buy-in, three point five K guarantee. You have seven, six of spades on the button. The low jack here is gonna open. Uh, low jack is a loose aggressive player, normally a twenty-eight, twenty-five. So he voluntarily puts money in the pot twenty-eight percent of the time. He's raising pretty much every single time he does that. And he's getting a little out of hand here at this ten dollar buy-in. Uh, so yeah, we have eight thousand, twenty-five chips. Blinds are two hundred, four hundred with a fifty ante. Comes around to us on the bottom. Here, do you wanna fold, call, raise to twelve hundred or raise to fourteen hundred?
Sorry, guys, I know that one was really, really low. Um, it's the volume of the video. I don't know why it is. I have that chip.
Yeah, his, his volume was super low for me, like.
Super low for me too.
Yeah, it was low for everybody. Like, I got it maxed out on my Chrome.
I was just saying the same thing. I have it maxed out too. It looks like it's all the way. Uh, I think that's just the recording.
Yeah, sorry about that. That's for him, man.
Jaf said, look, good to see you, my man. Says, show me the ways.
Alright, so sorry about the volume, guys. Um, you wanna give a gist? He was saying Narco Cop was playing about deep pipping about twenty-eight percent of hands. He had been very aggressive in this, uh, ten dollar buy-in. And here are the options to fold, to call, to raise to twelve hundred, raise to, what? Wait a minute, he made it eight hundred and my man's given options for twelve and fourteen hundred clicks.
Yep.
So it's already getting, uh, kinda spicy in here.
I already folded, man. So like, I'm lost. We're gonna be lost. I'm gonna be lost. This is whole quiz. I knew Alex was gonna make me uncomfortable, but that's why I like.
We can flat. Yeah, we can certainly flat here. I mean, I, I would find it flat here versus some opponents.
I mean, we're not really getting odds to just flat to hit the flush draws and straight draws. We're, we're a little light on that. So that's kinda where I'm conflicted.
Well.
Cuz if we click back and then C back, we just took our twenty blinds down to like sixteen or fifteen and then bail. So I, I guess I, like.
We're all about to learn something new. I think Alex is going to click it. And it's interesting here because if we flat here, right, he jams, I believe that opens back up the action where we may not even get to realize the equity. When we do flat. So if we flat here, we flat to eight hundred, we got the guy here in a small blind. When he actually jams. And then it opens up the action. He comes over the top, some percentage of the time, we don't get to play the damn hand. So that really sucks. So that's why I think he may be inclined to use one of these sizings and I think he's gonna go to fourteen hundred. Cuz I can kinda see that.
I'm gonna go with the crowd cuz I am gone. I'm already gone. Uh, so I see fourteen hundred easy. I see a call.
What are you guys doing here?
Double min click. Nebula, thank you for the follow. Um, what are you guys doing out there? Put out your answers in the chat. What do you guys think? I'm gonna have to go with the Arm on this one cuz he's already melted my brain and we're on the first option.
I am going to fourteen hundred. I can, I think it does create some spots where we have nice coverage when he does call. So for instance, you know, we're gonna have a lot of very, very strong hands in our range when we click. Like overpairs, very strong high card hands. And now we're gonna be able to actually have equity on some of the medium and low runouts as well.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, it's cool. And then when we put in a fourteen hundred, we don't have to worry about putting in eight hundred him coming over the top. And I think that's kind of an interesting consideration. I wonder if he'll bring that up.
A little funny tidbit, um, do you see who's under the gun? You know who that is?
Wait a minute, D Nobs.
It's Capsa.
Oh, that's Capsa.
That's a friend of ours. That's a friend of ours.
My boy Capsa, oh shit, that's hilarious.
You called the Narco Chips Narco Cop, who's an ex-study partner of mine, and, uh, so I looked, I was like, oh, Narco. But it's not, no, it's Narco Chips, but then I saw Capsa was there, so a different ex-study partner of mine. That's funny. Yeah, God, uh, let me think. I got Nudist who likes to take more than one option. Hope y'all choose to click, and he just goes, okay, never click back. It is horrible.
Yeah, I got, for me, I got, personally, I'm folding pre, but I'm a nit. That's proven. Alright, Luke. Uh, Dee says, I'm leaning more towards a three bet to fourteen hundred, as am I. Duderino says, in-game fold. This quiz, I think he's gonna make it fourteen hundred. I've convinced you guys. And then I bet that's why the raise sizes are the way they are.
I have more calls than fourteen hundred, so I think we're gonna go call just to go with the army and, and, oh. How many points did you get in the last quiz? Was it a tie? I feel like it was a tie.
Oh shit, well, we'll have to look. I don't even know. It's probably a tie.
I think it was a tie.
Cuz that feels like we picked a lot of the same shit.
Yeah. Alright, cool. Uh, you're going fourteen hundred?
I'm going fourteen hundred, guys.
Call with the army, let's see what happens.
Alright, and.
For the record, in case that's the winning answer.
Right.
If you said fold here, that is perfectly standard for a reason. You could even, uh, justify an all-in here. Normally, a fold or an all-in is the two options you should pick between here. And if you just felt, okay, he's normally opening twenty-five percent of the hands, but I don't know for a fact he's opening that much here. Uh, I don't want people to see I'm re-jamming seven, six suited, just, just in case the Dryly comes along for the ride. Okay, I don't really buy it. I, I think if I put all-in here, it should be an all-in, but since I didn't give you that option, if you thought it has to be a fold, fold or an all-in, there's no all-in on these options, I guess it's a fold. Okay, that's fine. Uh, those are standard for the reason. If you said call, I really don't like that because if he jams, is that reopening action? There's a lot of squeezing here. And that, yeah, that's a legal raise, right? Yeah, that'll be a legal raise if he jams. And, uh, we got smart, aggressive players will just re-jam on top of that. Cuz they know if you didn't re-jam twenty acts, you would just have nothing there, cuz that's one of the easiest stacks to jam. Uh, I think you get jammed on by this person quite often. Now, if you min-raise here, this, at lower six tournaments, this is kind of where I workshop new plays. I try to find guys that play somewhat seriously, and I try to workshop new plays. I've been twenty-rounding with min-raises with very interesting results. Uh, a lot of guys, well, first of all, if they snap all you, they, they're at the butt end of their range. Uh, if they time-bag for a long time, they usually have something. Uh, people play very directly toward it. Uh, people get very worried about it. They think it's very odd. They don't like it. Uh, not as many people jamming over it as you would think. So I think fourteen hundred or twelve hundred works. I think, I think you can never win twelve hundred here. Limit poker, limit hold'em, and he calls here.
Okay, Ryan, thank you for that reset, buddy. Good to see you. Three months. Yeah, I'm good.
So you, you went with call, right?
Yeah, it was five points for the call. How much was for the fourteen?
Eight.
Eight, nice one. Um, so we gotta come up from a high. We need sixes to fuck this hand up. Uh, okay, Ryan, thank you for the reset, my man. Welcome back. Uh, yeah, I mean, it makes sense. He said folding totally standard for a reason. Um, I don't know how many points that was, but yeah, we went with the call, and, uh, here we are on this board. He checks.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm going very small here. I'm just going to small sizing. Uh, it really, I think the bigger sizing on this board where we have no utility when, oh, wait a minute. Uh, I'm gonna give the people in the chat a chance before I say what I gotta do, wanna do. Yeah, what are you guys doing?
I think, given that I flatted, I would check this back. Um, given that you raised, I would check this back.
No way. I'm never checking this. We have seven high.
I just feel like you're never getting it.
But you're not thinking about it in a perspective of, of your range. Like, he's going to have ace highs and underpair. Like, the only object is to make him fold the hands with no equity.
I get that, but I just think he's got a ton of Jack X, ten X, Queen X, King X. Nine X combo draw, like, oh, this is the worst board I've ever just seen, but I think. And I do realize that we have seven high and we need to see that. Had this been King, eight, seven, or something like that, see that all day.
Go ahead, take that check option. Go ahead. Yeah, you can, I mean, we have, I think we just have to bet.
He said, go take that. He baited me. Did you hear that?
No, I think, I think checking, go ahead, checking sounds really good, buddy. Go ahead, do it.
He said, you go ahead with your check. I'm about to win this, son of a bitch.
Yeah, I think we gotta stab and make his ace X and underpairs fold, and we also might pick up an opportunity to semi-block, as crazy it may sound, on turn to shove versus make him fold out some marginal equity hands when our range looks pretty fucking nutty when we click, see bet, shove. You know, when we turn, uh, a straight draw with an eight or something.
You're just gonna leave yourself twelve bigs behind.
Oh, I do this all the time. You know I do this.
So uncomfortable. Uh, the pot's thirty-four hundred, Cyrus, um, so seventeen hundred's about half pot. Martin says half pot. Uh, Outkick says, Alex will say this hits his range to check. That's all I got in my chat so far. Get chances out there so we can see what the, what the crowd is doing, or bet seventeen hundred. Uh, what did you say? You're betting eleven hundred. You have sixes?
Oh, yeah, it's gonna like, yeah, I'm, I'm just betting eleven hundred, and it looks like my chat is pretty heavy on the seven, uh, eleven hundred as well. I have a continue for eleven hundred and make him fold his ace X in small pairs from Debarago. And Duderino says eleven hundred sets of a pot-sized jam on the turns and folds out small pairs. Very good point. Um, and Bennett says, I like a small see bet. This does smack a ton of the under the gun brain, but he has all those King, Jack, Queen, ten, King, nine, so bet a little probe and try to get out his airballs. Yep.
Nudist is a cheater, just calling him out in chat, cuz it's always check or bet seventeen hundred. Fold or? You can't cover both sides of the line, Nudist. We gotta take a stand.
Yeah, you gotta be decisive. What are you doing?
Uh, I think with the click back eleven hundred sounds super sexy. I think seventeen hundred commits way too much of a stack. I think if I'm gonna see bet this, which I would still lean check, but if I was gonna see bet this, I would bet super small, like you said, to bet just the shit out of his range, and at this point, if we bet seventeen hundred, we're leaving ourselves eleven bigs behind. I just don't think that's fundamentally sound. So if I'm gonna bet, it's gotta be the baby bet. I would check.
It's interesting here because, I mean, we could check, we have zero equity, and he probably continues a lot. Um, but at the same time, when we decide to click, I think we bet, but, alright, I'm going to betting eleven hundred for me.
My whole crowd, like, everyone, one, two, three, three checks, one, two, three, four, five seventeen hundreds. But I, I can't do seventeen hundred because I wanna win this quiz. So I'll split the difference with you guys. I go eleven.
Alright, eleven it is. Alright, let's run this.
Checking would be my answer now, for the record.
Uh, if you guys have been watching me for a while on this site, you know, I tell you, if three bet people and a guy calls you, two cards nine are higher, not so hot on the board, cuz they tend to have high cards. Well, here we have three of them. Uh, bet eleven on here doesn't work. That's seven. Bet eleven on here is gonna close this super active. Yeah, okay. If he, if he does have six or suited and stuff, which he damn well should, if we're three betting here, uh, yeah, okay. You're almost right, but seventeen hundred, twenty-two hundred, no, this is a check. Uh, so we do check. And the turn comes, the ten of hearts, and he checks to us. Now here, do we wanna check? That eleven hundred, that seventeen hundred, or that twenty-two hundred?
Uh, you won.
Yeah, it's just cuz he gets too much of this one.
Yeah, he does. Like, three cards over a nine, and they're just gonna nail this kinda stuff. Like you said, we probably won't get as many folds as we think we do, because like, we, our object is to fold out ace high and underpair. But at the same time, the rest of his range probably smacks this, right? He has very little. We block some six and seven X combos that we want him to have, and everything else has got a piece, right? So, yeah, that's a very good point, man. You right, you right, you right.
That was the best. He didn't say anything. You won.
You won. I, I, I just, yeah, I'm just sneezy.
Uh, alright, cool. So he checked, and now we get this, and he checks again.
I mean, is this a spot we wanna check back, and then if he checks river, then we use our bluff on the river? Because if we bluff turn, I think it might be a check again. Like, why not, if we're, if we're taking this line, where we're just, we think we're beating these, these high cards, and he could still check some of these? Um, why not just bluff river when he checks three times?
Uh, yeah, guys, get out there. Oki says, uh, Martin says, bombs away at this point. I'm conflicted at this point, because when he checks twice, he never has the queen.
Would he bet a queen into you? Why would he bet a queen into you? You're just gonna fold everything.
Brought in more to pairs, is kinda what I'm thinking. And I have no other way to win. Like, now I'm out here with seven high on a board that he's showed no interest in. Like, honestly, with some of the stuff I've been working on, like, this is a spot I would love to jam.
Just right now.
Right now. He never has the queen. He doesn't have two pair. We take it down right now, and we have seven high. I love jamming here.
I just think, uh, a queen could potentially check twice in this spot, like, when he, we're not, he's not getting two streets from us. We're not gonna. He cannot go bet, bet, and expect to get called by worse when we check back this spot. We'd be betting all of our two pair combos. Anything with value. We block a Jack presumably if he has one. Um, and I just think this would be a spot to get one big street with the queen, if I were him.
I totally get it, and this is something that I've been fucking with lately after watching Jared Jaffe, Jerry Jaffe? How can I forget his first name? We have the same name. Um, Jared Jaffe's video on overbetting, and like, this is the exact spot he loves. Because I think that, yes, sometimes we're gonna run into a queen. But he's got four outs when he calls us, and everything else just folds, and we have seven high. We get a ten to fold, we get a Jack to fold, uh, we get a nine to fold, and we even get ace high to fold, you know? Fuck, we get eight high to fold. We get everything to fold.
Get a lot of hands to fold.
If I had to guess, considering you checked, I would probably say check again because of the stack about ratio.
Yeah, I'd probably check again. I mean, if we do bet eleven hundred and he calls, do we just turn our hand into a bluff on all rivers? Michael says, can we fold? Check, give up, and take a different quiz. Uh, and then Greater says, as played with the small bet on the flop, we give up. As played with the check on the flop, we bet. So, since we, if we would have bet the flop and got called, he'd be checking, but since we checked back the flop and he checks back turn, he's going to bet. And then Dee says, we bet twenty-two hundred, almost the same as a jam. Whoa.
Yeah, I guess what does twenty-two hundred accomplish? We get flatted, and then we're just jamming rivers as a bluff? Or are we betting two, twenty-two hundred and giving up, and then being stuck out there with five bigs, right? Big blind was eight hundred, I think? So that, twenty-two hundred can't be right. It's gotta be eleven hundred or check.
I agree. I mean, I'm probably check bluffing river, you know?
Uh, Martin says, it seems like he's an underpair here, and he's being stubborn and agreed. That's why I like to jam here, but that's not an option. You gotta watch that video on sixes. I've been schooling fools. You know I love big bet poker, too. Uh, but, uh, yeah. Uh, Jaf says, check shoving the river, the eight on the river. And he's already out there. The, the problem with the eight on the river, eh, I guess on the stack size, we're just going with the ass and the straight, right?
Yeah. This quiz is negatively impacting my confidence. I know. It's so bizarre, like, with the.
Yeah, he plays different poker. It's really interesting because when we do the Mad Affleck and the Jonathan Little quizzes, I feel like I get ten, 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 ten. When I do the assassin auto quizzes, I always get fours and fives, cuz he, he puts me way out of my, my coverage.
Right. Alright, so I'm gonna go with the check here, and then bluff rivers. Alright, guys, let's see. I think everybody was kinda conflicted, but we're doing it.
Now, one of the things I teach people when it comes to poker is when people get to the turn, they tend to have pairs. If you see that the flop, right? Uh, because you see that the flop, you usually get the high cards to drop out, then you get to the turn, and there's pairs. Now, if you're gonna fire that turn, you better be pretty sure those pairs are going to fold. Right here, you have a board that does not look good to any pair, right? He's got ace, king, ace, jack, ace, nine, ace, ten. All those hands were looking pretty mighty fine, pre-flop, on the flop, turn not so hot. Uh, Jack eight suited isn't in love with it, uh, ten eight suited, all those goofball hands. Uh, so here's the thing, if he's just got his suited gappers, right? His, uh, nine, seven suited, his six, four suited, his seven, four, seven, five suited, it's, uh, none of this is good. And even if he does have a pair on this board, not great either, right? He's not feeling it. If he flopped two pair, he probably would have checked to us. There's a good chance he would have led a queen trying to set up an all-in on the river. So when he checks you, you know it's at best like two pair, right? Now, he checks to us. I think we should take a shot. I think eleven hundred's not getting any pair to fold. Uh, twenty-two hundred will obviously get a pair to fold, but I think half pot here actually is right, because that looks very valuing. And if this guy's, if this guy's gunning to fold a pair, that's all he's gonna need, right? So we bet, and he bets. River is a six of diamonds. He checks to us. Now here, do you wanna check? Do you wanna bet eleven twenty-five from your five thousand one hundred and twenty-five stack? Do you wanna bet thirty-four hundred, or do you wanna bet all-in?
Excuse me, interesting spot, guys. What would you guys do? Put it out there. Seventeen hundred was the bet. Told you, it blows my mind. Um, I know what I would do, having played the hand in this scenario. Um, what do you guys think? Fold, Jafso, just, well, you can't fold, you can check.
Dude, what is going on?
What is going on?
He said, oh my god, I just got dumber. Yeah, this is, these assassin auto quizzes are always, um,
Left field.
Always just something different, man. They're just he's, yeah, he's something else, man.
I also think he's so special.
Bet thirty-four hundred or all-in, he says. Has to be all-in now. A six doesn't have showdown.
Talking to the mute button the whole time. I was going crazy when you said, what the hell is going on here? Um, yeah, I was saying assassin auto does come out of left field, and that's why his quizzes are so much different. Um, I also think, you know, he's so special, um, that I think his style is a little harder. I wanna be say a little, I'd say it's much harder to learn in general, because it's so nuanced.
Yeah, yeah, he's picking up on situations, uh, he, he, just the way he approaches the game and views, views the game is he's not just using a theoretical baseline for things. He's attacking tendencies and exploits a lot, you know? More so than the, uh, theoretical side, so.
Yeah, I always use the matrix analogy. So if like, GTO is seeing the matrix, and then when you exploit, you're betting the spoon. And assassin auto ties that bitch in like two knots.
I mean, imagine betting thirty-four hundred and leaving yourself whatever, like, three bags or something, like, it's, it's uh, I don't even know if it's a debate, like, the blinds are too far, right?
Sure, I got three all-ins and one thirty-four hundred. I agree, thirty-four hundred's a problem. We can't just bet two thirds of our stack, and then that's like the weirdest bet ever. We just gotta jam it and get the fold equity from single pairs. Uh, one interesting thing, um, Alex said was that, uh, even ace, king should check back this flop, which I agree. And we are on the turn and are betting ace, king in a super awkward spot. Another reason why I like to jam sixes, cuz ace, king is gonna be shedding themselves.
I mean, you'd really think this guy is going to just flat a click back on the flop with ace, king.
No, so that part, I guess, I agree.
So I think he has like, uh, you know, he can have some ace, jacks, some, you know, Jack ten or something like that. But, yeah, at this point, yeah, I think we only have to jam. I'd, I'd, if we do any, if he bets. But yeah, at this point, yeah, I think we only have to jam. I'd, I'd, if we do any, if he bets another size other than all-in, I'm gonna lose my damn mind. Like, I, I, he, he's, I can't watch these two, they'll fuck my game up. If he bets a size other than all-in, I'm gonna shit myself.
That is funny. Yeah, I, I'm the same. Let's roll.
Alright, let's do it. I'm all in.
There we go. There's a dead points.
You are not going to get the guy to fold the pair on the turn. The other part of the reason I like the seventeen hundred chip bet, which I couldn't say on the last answer for obvious reasons, is look how much it looks like I set up the river jam here. The guy's decent, as I said in an earlier, uh, answer. So he's gonna see that. And here's another thing. Let's say he calls you really quickly on the turn. It's a, you, you should just jam here regardless of how long it takes him to call. But let's say he calls you really quick. Most guys will not snap call with a queen. A lot of people will snap call and it kind of caps their range. It's like, I don't have to think that much. Uh, which, to be fair, this is one situation a guy could be trapping. Where the tiny tell is really valuable is let's say the board comes ten of diamonds, eight of diamonds, five of spades. You see that the guy snap calls you. Well, if he has a set of tens, a set of eights, a set of fives or ten, ten eight, he would have had to have thought there for a second because there's multiple flush draws and straight draws out there. He would have to decide, am I gonna call and am I gonna milk this or am I gonna check raise right now? Here, he doesn't have to think. If he called really quickly. So that usually to me is like one pair, please don't bet a god. But generally you should, I think you even get folds out of ten, nine, jack, ten is not gonna be loving it. You could get picked off, but I think a lot of the time, this is one pair that called once, just kind of hoping you'll lay it off. Uh, this is a lot of one pair combinations. So when he checks, you set up the jam and yeah, in this case it looked. The other part of the hand that really. The other thing, let me put a O on this. We have this guy opening like a quarter of the hands. That is a lot of hands. And I said, he's kind of going nuts in this hand, which means it's probably up towards thirty, thirty, thirty percent of the hands. That's a lot of crappy pairs here that are folding. Right? You might even get a call out of eights on the turn or sevens, garbage, right? Uh, there's much more like nine, seven suited and, uh, ten eight suited and ten, seven suited and yada, yada. If this guy's opening eighteen percent of the hands, you far less likely he has one pair on this river you can jam into. That's my final word.
That's it. Drop the mic. He's done. Uh, so yeah, let me get things turned down here a little bit.
Alright, can you hear me?
Yeah, it's all in, obviously on the answer. Oki Rain asked, bet thirty-four hundred makes it look like a value bet. The problem is, Oki, like, what would you be, would you be doing that if you had a queen? And if you are doing that with a queen, the problem there is you're losing twenty-four hundred chips worth of value that would have called you. And what other hand are you betting here for value besides a queen? All the two pairs check, right? All the sets check back. So you literally only have a queen for value here. Agreed? Do you agree with that, Sixes?
When you shove here, yeah, I mean.
No, no, if like, yeah, when you shove here.
Oh, well, for value, you're not gonna be value jamming two pair, I don't think. Cause you wouldn't expect worse two pair to really be able to call and you're gonna be blocking some of the combos they can call. Yeah, I, I really think we probably find some check backs with maybe top two can jam if we don't think he has a queen, but yeah, overall, we're just gonna be shoving the straight. So I really like the line, uh, and I think when he extrapolated on his range coming to the river, he can do that because of, he assumes that his entire, I mean, not assumes, his entire range continues to that click. And then we can omit maybe some of the absolute strongest hands when he doesn't come over the top of our, you know, click back. So knowing he can keep in his entire range, um, is a very good point there. That he can get him to the river with a very weak range. Um, you know, that's one of the reasons. I like that.
Yeah, like I said, that's why I was doing this on the turn. I mean, I just think like, like you said, like, he checks twice, he never has the nuts here and so I'm, I have seven high, so, you know.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's why I probably just bet flop and, but I mean, hits, you don't want to bet flop. Um, you're, you're, you're a hundred percent right. So yeah, this was a very interesting hand. I still don't like the seventeen hundred bet on the turn.
I don't like to call for, I don't like to click back three.
Yeah, there's a lot of things going on here. I'm not, uh, the biggest fan of, but at the same time, you know, there's all kinds of different ways to play ha, play hands and, uh, you know, he made a lot of very good points as well. So not hating on his game or his style because it works.
Yeah, it's definitely not just madness. There's definitely method to his madness. And, uh, trying to get into all different types of points of view and, and headspace is as good. Even if it makes you uncomfortable to play this way, there are people out there playing this way. And so you can kind of, you know, get a little accustomed of, of some different lines, you know? Uh, clutch two legend, thank you for the follow buddy. Welcome, welcome.
Yeah.
That's what happened.
I broke a sweat. Uh, these guys are silly. Um, yeah, we've, we've almost been live for two hours. I may, I think I have to, uh.
I got time for one more. If you don't, that's cool. Um, I think it's a tie though, right? We tied the second one. I won the first one. I think he won this one.
Did I? I mean, I, I have, how many points? I have twenty-six points.
Yeah, you beat me on this one. It's a tie.
Oh, okay. So yeah, well, you know what that means. Running the giveaway.
There we go. In back-to-back weeks with a tie.
Dubrigo says, man, GBT is a competitive dude. He's super competitive. He's always, every time I try to do something or have a score, he always, he always has to try to do something or say something. That's my dude.
It's crazy. I am super fucking competitive, but I'm also a good loser. So I'm not like one of those guys who like, you know, is competitive and a douche about it. You beat me fair and square. It's always a handshake and a smile.
Right, right.
But it could be a nose picking competition. If there's a leaderboard, I'm in.
This guy's silly, man. But, uh, yeah, that was fun, man. I think I'll probably have to go. Go do, I got a bunch of stuff to do today, but yeah, I'm gonna run this giveaway. Everybody in toes chat, thank you guys for hanging around. Uh, we appreciate you guys. Be sure to check this stuff out. I think it's awesome. And one last time, let's show them, let's show them real quick, To.
Oh yeah, I'm putting the cash command out there for you. Follow my man Crazy Sixes if you're not already. We do this every Saturday. And, uh, really, really fun, like we said, um, we are here on pokercoaching.com exclamation point PC in my chat or Crazy Sixes chat. To get links on how you can get at least the free quizzes. And if you'd like to sign up for the premium, congratulations, you'll have five hundred some odd quizzes to, uh, to mess with. Um, so at least click the links and get the free stuff. You can't, what's going on here? You can't pass up on the value and as Sixes was alluding to, if I can get my browser to go.
Here it is, guys.
Two new quizzes up. I'm zooming in right now on pokercoaching.com. Two handsome fellas. Me and Crazy Sixes are officially on the site. Congratulations, buddy. It's a big moment.
Yeah, it's a big deal, man. I mean, they've only, they've had almost six hundred quizzes, uh, six hundred and two quizzes total. And they've had the same guys doing all these quizzes and, you know, here we are. We know we broke in and, uh, we're gonna be creating some content. We got a lot more quizzes coming up ourselves. Stay tuned, sign up for free, take my quiz. And, uh, let me know how you did, man. Send me some screenshots on Twitter and, uh, you know, we'll see what we can do.
I'm gonna take your quiz right now. Also, uh, crazy, you know, you and I set off on an adventure together. What, a year and a half or a week ago, something like that?
Yes, sir.
To get better and to make a mark and fuck, here we are together, man, making it together. It's pretty amazing.
I know, man. We started the study group last year. We started a study group with just us last year, working our asses off. You know, I didn't miss a study session for a year. Every Tuesday and Thursday for four hours at a time. So yeah, it's exciting to see the work paying off.
Absolutely, man. Fist bumps, buddy. You can't see it, but I'm giving you one on camera right now.
My dude. Alright guys, I'mma let To go and then I'mma run this giveaway. We're gonna do a ten dollar giveaway. Let me get that set up. Um, hang around, guys. We're gonna be doing a ten dollar giveaway for you guys. Be sure, I think To's doing one as well.
Yep.
Hell, you gotta be a follower. So go follow my man, jump in his channel, enter both giveaways. I don't give a shit. And, uh, yeah, we'll see you guys next Saturday, same time, same place. And we're both playing big ass sessions tomorrow. So be sure to check us out then.
Alright, I'll talk to you later.
See you, buddy.
Alright guys, stay tuned here for the, uh, giveaway. Um, I'm gonna start the giveaway now. Ten dollars ACR only, because that's the only I have to give to you. Now, we are going to be probably changing that, maybe do a PayPal thing in the future. So, um, I am gonna create it. It is zero tickets. So all you have to do is type exclamation point ticket space one hundred. You will be in for the ten dollar ACR giveaway. So that's running right now. While that's running, and I'll give you guys a chance to all kind of get in there. Uh, Cyrus had a great job. Can we take Sixes quizzes together? I think that is a phenomenal idea and I think we're gonna do that right now. Little sneak preview. I have no idea what this quiz is. Uh, I haven't seen it. Um, but I think for this one, it would be super fun. Uh, PC command out there from JPG. Thank you, guys. Get the click, get the free uh, stuff out there as well. Follow the link. Also, I always record these sessions and put them on YouTube on the YouTube channel. So stay tuned, follow on social media, exclamation point follow. Um, it might be exclamation point social. I think I might have changed it. There it is. Exclamation point social to follow on those and you'll get the link to YouTube where you can subscribe and see these videos and some of the other stuff I got on there as well. Alright, so all that said, I see some tickets coming in. Let's, uh, let's play Sixes quiz in honor of him. Let's do it, guys. What do you think? Ooh. Yeah, let's do it. Ace king on ignition, his favorite site, two hundred dollar twenty K. He's playing big buy and stuff. He's a killer, guys. Don't, don't be fooled. Don't be fooled. Let's, uh, let's play this and see how it goes.
How's it going, everyone? This is, uh, Sean Dale, uh, AKA Crazy Sixes, just sharing a hand that I played in the Ignition. Two hundred dollar twenty K, hundred dollar knockout. I believe this is one of their SM Super Millions Poker Open events. Um, so yeah, let's take a look. Have ace king here on the button. You know, we're into the end. He's three, six now. Have a read. Been playing with, uh, the big blind since the beginning of the tournament. He seems pretty aggressive. So you know, if he does ever three bet us here, we're happy to get it in. Uh, even forty bigs deep. But, uh, yeah, it gets to us, uh, easy decision. We're all opening here. And yeah, big blind calls. We see a ten, seven, five flop here with ace king versus an aggressive opponent. Yeah, what do you guys like here? Do you like a check? A bet to one thousand? Uh, bet to two thousand or do you like potting it, you know, going thirty-two hundred here? Uh, what do you guys think is the best line?
This is gonna be really interesting, guys, too, because I know Sixes so well. Like I said, we've studied together twice a week, fifteen hours a week for, for years. Uh, D B D says, bet one K, get your scores out there. I, uh, your, your answers out there. Bet, eh, welcome, welcome, welcome. Two thousand says Cyrus. He's bombing it. I see a one K. I see a two K. I see a one K from the dude, man. One K from Marlin. I'm on team one K as well. The one thing that's interesting to me about the two K bet Cyrus is that, um, if I had a valuey hand here, a ten X hand that I'm betting, or even an overpair on a board that's got this many combos and draws, I would be betting two K. Um, which now has me a little conflicted. Um, I in-game was like, always gonna bet one K here. I'm a little bored here. But two K does definitely have some merit, Cyrus, for that reason. And part of it is that I know Sixes really well and I know he likes third pot bets. Uh, but I could definitely see an argument of two K, because I would do that with my value hands. Um, I definitely would. Looks like most of you guys are one K. Let's click one K and see what happens. Seven, he likes checking.
Okay, so what are you doing here? Are we checking? We betting a thousand, two thousand or pop? Um, personally, I think, uh, versus an opponent who's capable of check raising, uh, gonna continue light. And I don't think really ever folds here. I'm gonna use this as a check. Not necessarily to just give up to turn bets, but we can just check. We have the best hand here a lot. Ace high is pretty strong and I really don't want to just get check raised here a lot. You know, we can pick up an ace or a king on the turn. And yeah, we do just check back and we see just a blank river, uh, excuse me, turn card here, the two. And now villain starts betting. Looks like he just goes half pot. Your line here, are you going to raise four K plus as a bluff? You know, two and a half, three X? Want to just fold here? Cause you don't want to face another bet on the river? Or do you just like calling here, thinking ace high could be good?
Interesting. So he actually already goes a little differently than I would go for sure, for sure, for sure. Uh, he checks back here. I, I wouldn't have checked back. Interesting. Um, so now that he does and he's facing a bet, fold, call or raise is the thing. My dog. He's got SoT, he's jamming, he says. Good move, good move. Tell equity is strong. There's extra points in tell equity. Now that's staff from the villain. It's a check raise for sure. Call from Duderino. My question about the check raise for sure, Marlin, is if it's a stab by shit that he's bullshitting with, or shitty hands that he's bullshit letting with, like, what's the point in raising? You're just getting worse to fold. Sure. Um, I would stick by the swap too, because this gets super awkward at this point. I think if I checked personally, I might fold just because I'm scared of double barrels and I have no hand to draw. Myself. Uh, but there are a lot of calls out there, so I'm gonna go with call. Ooh, full ten points.
Alright, so are we raising, calling or folding? Uh, I think our hand is so under wrapped here. That, uh, yeah, we do just want to call. Uh, aggressive opponents are going to feel compelled to turn some of their straight draws now into bluffs. There's a lot of straight draws, uh, jack eight, you know, six, nine, six, eight, three, four suited. So there's a ton of straight draws here, um, that miss, even some flush draws. That he may think he can just bet now and bet rivers, um, blank. So yeah, I think we do just call. Um, don't see a purpose in raising and turning our hand into a bluff on the turn. Although I think it would made deter some of his draw. We just get better to continue and all the worse to fold and.
Yeah, that's why we're not raising.
Now, the river does pair the board deuce. And makes a pretty big sizing here. Goes like four K and the six thousand here with two pairs. Certainly can have some deuce X in his range and whatnot. Um, what do we like here? Do we like a call? Fold or do we just raise now to make him fold some of the weakest parts, some of the weakest pairs may just fold? Five X, seven X, something like that. What do you like?
Yeah, I do think this, uh, uh, quiz, Duderino is a little funky. He did call, but he said fold was the best answer. I actually agree with that. I don't know if that's a glitch or not. I'll have to let him know to check his own quiz. And it also says raise, but it doesn't give a size. So there's a little glitch on this one. Um, so we're doing some, we're doing some QA right now. Uh, he's a lot of combos to fold, I agree. I think that he has a ton of tens and lots of sevens. And some very few two X hands. Then he does have some missed draws. I mean, that's kind of like why I would actually see bet the flop small, see bet the turn big and really put a lot of pressure on a seven. Or even a hand like pocket eights, pocket nines, pocket sixes, something like that. Um, that's how I would do it, I think. Um, but again, like that's why Sixes and I studied together, because we have very different styles and we're both winning players. So I'm a little lost. Like these feel like a little bit like the assassin auto um, quizzes for me, because these are different lines that I would normally take. As played, I would. I would fold. Cause he still has all the tens and all the sevens. Mr. I like queen, jack suited, raise here is golden GBT. Let's see. Sure, but again, we beat queen, jack suited, so we're raising to get worse to fold. So unless we're raising to try and get a seven to fold, because I don't think a ten is ever folding. I don't think raising has much merit. Cyrus says, doesn't know why, but it seems like I missed flush draw. Uh, that's why I like bet flop, bet turn, because he called calls with the flush draw and then on the river we can check back and we win. Flop check surprise Duderino two. Guess we just let it go. I'm in the same camp as the dude. flop tech surprise dude Reno two guess we just let it go I'm in the same camp as the dude that's why we studied together too alright I would fold I feel like he's gonna call uh I see two folds three fold I see two folds and a raise nudist's fold alright we're gonna fold this would have been a perfect alley-oop here I agree ten is a fold we got that one right
um call fold or raise well I think it's uh gotta be a call here when we have an aggressive opponent all kind of draws missed flush draws you don't block any of the flush draws you may be may have uh six nine six eight jack nine jack eight three four uh so yeah this is a pretty straightforward call I think we just use ace king as a bluff catcher here this hand
Yeah, his quiz is definitely jacked up
Be enough that we beat
He calls here
and he does have the gut shot so yeah I think it's a hand where you know uh we just use ace king as a bluff catcher even on wet boards you may feel you know compelled to bet to protect your ace high in some cases but it's just very good for our range and our opponent really doesn't give up in this spot a lot so yeah it was a cool tournament I think I just ended up running deep in this and find me a cash couple of knockouts uh so yeah thank you guys for uh you know watching this hand with me going through it and I look forward to doing this again thank you
There we go crazy sixes one uh yeah he played this up uh uh very differently than I would have um we both would have won the hand but uh I'm thinking his way he may have gotten a little more value cuz I would have bet flop bet turn and lost him on the turn so I'm letting sixes know his shit's blocked um sorry uh so yeah letting sixes know that his shit's back definitely he's fixed it uh so yeah um again different lines different lines different lines interesting interesting and I think when I take sixes even though I know him so well um it's gonna be score similar to this you know cuz I my style is very similar to Matt Affleck and Jonathan Little uh you know those guys are better than me it's similar style they're just better at it and uh and dude Reno has got a similar style to me as well um and uh yeah yeah but sixes is kind of in that assassin off we just think it's a little different can we do toes quiz with the I kinda wanted to leave these quizzes as a little bit of a a surprise um to give you incentive to go out there and check him out but I'm kinda like feeling proud about my quiz beyond and there so fuck it let's do it we'll save the other we made eight total so far so we'll save the other seven for you guys let's take my quiz what do you think alright here we go rolling my quiz back with another quiz here and uh we're sitting with ace queen this is the sixteen dollar and fifty cent buy-in tournament uh seven point five K guarantee small stakes tournament pretty regular I think a lot of small stakes players have this one in their rotation and uh we got ace queen here let's see how this rolls out I know what I'm doing we're gonna be raising ace queen here and I am a men raised type of guy bat reg up here on the button decides to make the call small blind comes along as well and surprisingly getting amazing odds this hand must be pretty bad the big blind folds what comes off ace king jack two hearts the small blind then checks and we have our decision point do you think you should check would you bet hundred and thirty six chips betting half pot at two hundred and six chips or are we bombing the spot with three hundred chips I know what I'm doing what do you guys think out there I know toe goes three hundred he says bomb it says Cyrus big better three hundreds is oky rain he's not skirt three hundreds is nudist three hundred looks good wet board says dude two oh six half pot from Sebs give another couple seconds here looks like a lot of three hundreds I am betting on the small side here never have that's true Marlin knows me too well never have I'm always like a forty sixty two thirds one third um never have personally I feel like half pot bet is one of the most overused shitty bets especially online everyone clicks the half pot button and they do it when they're bluffing they do it for value and you can get more value or get bluffs through for cheaper sometimes um and I think that's kind of a most of the bets I would toe six says these nuts let's do three hundred and see what uh toe has to say I don't wanna give anything away why are you checking toe mistake I think we should be checking here all the time for a few reasons uh one reason is is I wanna have some strength when I'm checking boards with top pair um two as strong as this hand looks it really is kind of a medium strength hand and if we bet here and get raised it's a really difficult spot when our opponent raises this here we don't know if they have a worst ace we don't know if they have just a hard draw king jack set of kings set of jacks we could have queen ten and have the nuts even though we do block that slightly we really don't know where we are and I don't wanna put in eighty big blinds on a board where I have top pair and maybe maybe it got shot and maybe and then backdoor hearts obviously isn't that um so part of the reason why I want to check this is because I wanna add some deception and part of it is because I do think this is a board where paw controlling is best yeah so we do check and bad rag does fire out half pot small blind folds and for all the same reasons uh I don't think we should be raising here especially now right because when we raise here now we really kinda push out all the weaker aces and now the only thing calling is the hard draw which we block two pairs sets and things of that nature so we're basically folding out anything that is worse we're only getting called by things that are better I would think or of course the hard draw which we do block and so it's a little harder for them to have that and so I think we only call here the turn is the four of spades obviously checking to the aggressor once again and bedreg checks behind now around the river with eight of spades we have our decision point would you check just try and get to showdown value would you bet small two hundred and seventy five chips would you bet half pot four hundred and thirteen chips or are we bombing this pot with six hundred and twenty chips yeah so the reason why I'm checking is because uh this is wet board and if I were eighty bigs deep if I get three bet am I four betting and then am I just call call folding this shit's gonna get awkward on a lot of turns rivers and we just have top pair um so that's why I'm checking and a little bit of balance too I wanna have some top pairs although I would check every ace here bet all two pairs bet all sets and bet the straight uh so yeah river bombing coming says Marlin what do you think six twenty four thirteen two seventy five or just checking like the biggest sign trying to get a call from a weak race maybe king access dude Reno six twenty says G facts dude says uh talking to mad dog let me check calls bluff catcher says Marlin six twenty so Cyrus two seventy five once checks back turn he's pretty capped I agree with that I think the check on the turn is the big 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 tell a little two seventy five from nudist uh when he checks the turn he never has a straight he never has two pair like those are always betting I had imagined the backdoor flush draw even betting right um so yeah I think he's got a lot of single pair hands myself the problem is with checking um the flop is that uh I'm sorry checking the river is that when he checks the turn he's almost never gonna bet the river so I'll give you that clue checking is out of the option because if we check he checks back river always with all his weak races all this king X and we don't get value from those if uh he had a value hand that he was gonna bet the river he would have bet the turn um so I see most of you guys out there with the three six twenties right one two actually it's tied two seventy five and six twenty little small little big um I think I generally go on the big side you're called by the weaker ace X and I think most things are folding otherwise um also we look like a missed hard draw a lot I agree Seth that checks behind us a lot six twenty he's breaks the uh the tie let's see what happens but I think the really telling part of this hand is when we check the four spades on the turn and our opponent checks behind I think that all of the two pair combos the straight sets I think those all bet the turn because they wanna get value one and two they kinda wanna protect their hand right they don't wanna heart or some sort of four card straight to come out on the river so when they check back the four I think they have a lot of king X hands maybe something like queen jack and a bottom pair and a gut shot and then a lot of worse aces so betting here definitely best the question is how much value do we think we can get I like to bond these pots uh especially in these low buy-in tournaments with some weaker players I think people are gonna make a mistake here and call with a king queen type of a hand um and then definitely all the aces because we played our hand so passively and they're gonna think oh they have missed draws and oh we checked the turn we we have to call the river so I'm a big fan of betting the six twenty I bet two thirds pot here and our opponent does call and shows us the ace five of diamonds so we do make that max value bet and get it on the river interesting here too like for those of you that were C betting the flop um I imagine let me see if I can rewind the video a little bit um C betting the flop I imagine with ace queen you're then betting the turn right and the pot's gonna be pretty big when you go small and big I would imagine uh some of you guys want big big right betting big on the turn for all the same reasons you were betting big on the flop I imagine now we have this inflated pot and we get to the eight of spades on the river are you then betting the river again or are you checking back and then having to call a giant bet like we might have to check fold if we bet big bet big we checked the flop we're really under bring our hand agree agree alright guys there you go a little preview of my quiz and crazy sixes quiz I appreciate y'all for hanging out with me exclamation point PC in the chat so you can sign up for free or the premium version whichever you prefer but no reason not to sign up for the free one uh twenty free quizzes there's some homework assignments in there there's some range charts for you a bunch of great uh content out there for you super fun for me too Cyrus I appreciate you all coming and hanging out um these have been a great success six and I are gonna do these every Saturday um we're getting reviews we're really enjoying them and uh all good stuff we got a giveaway going let's run the giveaway for the ten dollar ACR winner closing the giveaway drawing the winner my man Sebs are getting the ten dollar ACR giveaway for this one congratulations buddy uh hit me up with your screen name stock smasher I don't remember if there's a number at the end of it hit me up the screen name and I will send you uh the ten dollars on ACR thank you for all the uh the good stuff also if you missed this and wanna catch up on more one we do it every Saturday starting at noon eastern nine AM Pacific so you can check us out next Saturday um as well doing with my partner crazy sixes also um I record these all and put them on the YouTube channel so check them out on YouTube as wow alright there is the spiel let's see who we're gonna throw the host over to on this lovely Saturday afternoon uh who should be who should be who should be oh we like never sent it to let's do some W cute mixed game movement we're gonna send over to pi face super good guy uh over on the other side of the pond playing the W cute mixed games and uh don't forget to come back tomorrow as we grind heavy for the big Sunday I'll see you soon peace